Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Delhi Township Trustees for September the 14th of 2016. As is our usual practice, we will begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is in remembrance of 9/11, which we all felt and felt the sorrow for this past weekend. So we'll have that moment of silence for those families who still mourn the loss of a lot of their own family. All right? Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, the representative of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. We'll begin with motions for consideration. Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-153, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting held on August 31st, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-153 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-154, approve bills for payment.
I've moved motion 2016-154 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-155, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending August 30th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-155 to approve a payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-156, accept the resignation of Joseph G. Stoffolano, career firefighter, paramedic, in the fire department, effective September 19th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-156 to accept the resignation of Joseph G. Stoffolano.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-157, approve the fire department promotions of Brian Sunderhouse and Joe Abel from career firefighter EMT to career firefighter, paramedic, and Dave Benkin from career firefighter, paramedic, to first-year lieutenant, all effective September 15th, 2016.
I've moved motion 2016-157 to approve the promotions of Brian Sunderhouse and Joe Abel.
I second the motion.
Trustee, as well, you also want to include Dave Benkin in your...
I'm sorry, Dave Benkin, too.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-158, designate Greg DeLong, Community Development Director, to represent Delhi Township on the Hamilton County Planning and Development Thoroughfare Update Committee, replacing the former Community and Economic Development Manager, Catherine Ferick.
I move motion 2016-158 to designate Greg DeLong to represent Delhi on the Hamilton County Planning and Development Thoroughfare Update Committee.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-159, authorize the township administrator to notify Highland as broker in Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield of termination of broker services and health care plan coverage, effective September 30th, 2016.
I've moved motion 2016-159 to authorize the township administrator to notify Highland as broker in Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield as termination of broker services and health care plan coverage, effective September 30th, 2016.
I second the motion.
Mr. Landrum, did you have any comments to this motion?
Now, just in case there be any questions, this really has to do with notifying them because of becoming self-insured, that we are planning on starting on October 1st, which there'll be a presentation given tonight. So this is just giving me directive and permission to notify the appropriate parties that we'll be ending our services with them.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-160, approve the hiring of Jared M. Smith, part-time seasonal gardener with the Parks and Recreation Department, at a rate of $10 per hour, effective on or after September 15th, 2016.
I've moved motion 2016-160 to approve the hiring of Jared M. Smith.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Presentations this evening, we're busy. First would be Police Chief Jim Howard.
Thank you, President and trustees. It's an honor, first of all, I'd like to extend appreciation for all the DCPA members and officers that are here in attendance tonight. I'd like to introduce, and it's an honor and a privilege to introduce Abby Baumann. He's a police officer with Delhi Township for swearing in this evening. Abby's 26 years old. She grew up and she resides in Greentownship. She graduated from Mother Mercy High School in 2008, where she attended on athletic and academic scholarships at Shawnee State University for basketball, in which during her tenure there, her four years there, she earned first-team All-American awards, academic and scholar, NAIA Scholar-Athlete awards, and in 2012, she won the Mid-South Conference Hustle Award. So with that, she's going to be running into her details. I'll save money on gas. She graduated in 2012 from Shawnee. She obtained a position with the Hamilton County probation office, Hamilton County probation department, in which during that time when she was working there, she put herself the last six months through the Scarlet Oaks Police Academy, in which she graduated on August 4th, is a valedictorian over class. So we welcome Abby. She's going to be a tremendous asset to the department and the community, looking forward to working with her for 25 years. Your Honor.
Great. This is, oh, this is my copy?
Yes.
Okay. You'll need it right back. All right.
Abby, I get to do the honor of swearing you in. I, Abby L. Baumann, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, of the state of Ohio, of the state of Ohio, and the resolutions of the Township of Delhi, and the resolutions of the Township of Delhi, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge, and perform all duties incumbent upon me, as a police officer of the Delhi Township Police Department, so help me, God. So help me, God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Sorry.
You want to in that picture?
Yeah, I'll get in there, Jeff. Jeff, when you get all three of us? You'll be jealous.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Abby.
Of course, that's one of our happiest and proudest moments, when we're able to swear in new officers to the Delhi Township Police Department. So congratulations, Abby Baumann, and welcome to Delhi Township. Next, on presentations, I do have Pete Pritchard from the Steering Committee of the Delhi Township Bicentennial. You have an update for us?
Oh, just a little one there. Good evening to all of you. That's a hard act to follow when you swear somebody in there for a new employee. But anyway, I just wanted to mention, start off, I guess, with the Dog Days of Delhi that we, was held August 27th. The weather was very good here until about halfway through the afternoon, and that really blew in hard, so it kind of blew the crowd away. But it was pretty good success. The DBA, Tony Capel, the president of the DBA, is still kind of taking care of getting bills in and so on, so he'll be back probably at a later meeting here to give you guys a total update, once everything's totaled up, so. But I think for the most part, it was really a big turnout, especially in the beginning of the day, and I think some of you were there, so you saw the crowd and how many booths we had and so on, so there was a lot going on, so. September 10th, I'd like to, we had the Delhi Historical Society hosted the Delhi Antiques Roadshow, and Frank Farmer-Loomis agreed to do 40 appraisals. We actually, he had 43. He squeezed three more in. It was attended by about 50 to 60 people, so I think a lot of people learned, and they certainly learned a lot about their cherished items. I'm sure they got a little value on them, so that's always interesting, so. September 23rd, Mount St. Joe University's third annual 5K run, so it is third annual, so it's September 23rd. September 25th is the Delhi Pike's Peak. This is something kind of interesting, I think, being sponsored by the Sisters of Charity, and what it is, they're featuring guided tours of the university there itself, also the mother house at 5900 Delhi, and of course Bailey Place. They are guided tours, they are offering, I guess, food and drink and so on. They've been really working hard on this, I know they have, and it's kind of neat to see. And I know a lot of people in this township really don't know what's really where they're at 5900 Delhi. I don't think they quite grasp the jewel that we have in this township. I mean, it's a really neat building, and I don't know if all of you have even been through that complete. I mean, this is a chance to go see something that you normally don't see, and it's actually historic. I mean, it really is. And I hope this event really goes over well. October 30th, it is our annual open house for the Delhi Fire Department. It's also the 10-year anniversary of the Delhi Fire Museum, 10 years since we did the ribbon cutting on that. So we're hoping to kind of tie that in with the bicentennial as well, and what we're trying to put together is, believe it or not, making plans for a vintage fire truck show. So we've invited a group, a club, and it's called Miles Greenwood Society, and Miles Greenwood was one of the very first fire chiefs of the city of Cincinnati. But anyway, these men collect and restore fire apparatus, and their group reaches from Dayton, Ohio, down and down near Louisville, and we've invited them to come, and we're hoping that we're going to have maybe an overflow of crowd of apparatus, and if so, we would like to obviously go down to the Delhi Seniors Building possibly for overflow, but we'll talk about it at a later date, I guess. But anyway, you can kind of look at that as being like a car show, but only vintage fire trucks. I want to, also, October 10th, here, back up a little bit, the Delhi Historical Society will be holding an event called Finding Your Home's Ancestry. And basically what that is, it's held 7:00 PM at the Glen Carter Lodge, again, October the 10th. Anne Senfeld, she has written a book called Digging Cincinnati History, and basically, she'll assist people in finding their home's history and talk about the property before their home was built. You know, what exactly was there, a farm or whatever it was, but kind of interesting program, Finding Your Home's Ancestry, so should be kind of an interesting thing, so that's all I have to share, but any questions or comments, or?
Nothing.
We're winding down here. It is September, obviously, but trustee starts.
What time is the 5K?
5K, I do not have a time on that with me, I was just looking at that.
I believe it's 7:00 PM, 6 or 7.
It's an evening event.
I was going to say probably 6:00, I was thinking, but I wasn't positive about the time, but yeah, so that is the third annual on that as well, so.
I agree with you, Pete. The tour of the mother house is truly a treasure. I've had the guided tour, and the artifacts that are there are outstanding. So if you can mark the time to go up and see that, you know, and they don't really open it to tours all that often.
Hence why I'm stressing that. Like I said, most people do not really...
So this is really a great opportunity to see that mother house, and it's...
The chapel went through a full restoration, I do believe, in 1999, and I know we kind of took a part in that from the fire department, because it was such an extensive thing and so many workers on the site.
And then Bailey will be opening their new building that, for that event as well.
Exactly that, for their memory unit, so they'll be planning on that as well, so. But like I said, they've been really working hard, and I think it's kind of an interesting with how they came up with that, Delhi Pike's Peak, so I certainly urge people to go over and take a look at it.
Don't wind down yet.
We'll be selling the cookbooks there that day, too, so.
Yes, we will, there. Thank you, trustee.
God bless our cookbooks.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
All right. Our last presentation this evening is from our Human Resource Manager, Lisa. This is about our health care.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before she starts, I would want to say, we do have representatives from Cheryl Morgan here tonight, so in case we do get in over our head on a question or so, Cheryl, I will give Lisa some kudos. She has worked very hard in getting the information that she's about to share. This has been a grueling process for all of us, but it's exciting news, and we look forward to sharing this information with you and the community tonight. So go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, Pete, and thank you, trustees. So we're going to talk about medical self-insurance. As you see on the slide here, it's a plan year of 10-1, 2016, so starting this October, until 9:30 of 2016. Just a little bit of background on what we're talking about when we're talking about medical self-insurance and what the alternative is. Currently, Delhi Township is what we call fully insured, and we're fully insured with Anthem right now. And basically, what that means is, fully insured plans, Anthem sets a rate and says, if you're an employee, this is what you're going to pay a month, if this is what, you know, employee plus spouse, this is what you as the employer will pay, and so on and so forth. And then you pay that per-month enrollment rate for those employees to Anthem every month. So regardless of how many claims you actually incur, whether it's underneath that Anthem amount or over that Anthem amount, that's what your spend is for medical. As far as self-insurance goes, though, it's different in the fact that there are some monthly administrative fees, and we'll talk more in depth about what all those are, but it's, so it's a monthly set administrative fees, but then the rest of your dollars are what are your claims. You know, if you have good claims experience, then you put that money back in your pocket versus Anthem keeping it, because they don't give rebates, I'll tell you that, so. So that's what the difference between fully insured and self-insured is. The reason why we're having this meeting is the Ohio Revised Code 9.833 requires us to have a public meeting, if, you know, any local government entity is going to enter into a self-insurance realm, that we disclose all the terms and conditions of the contracts that we will be entering when we do that. And you have to do that one week prior to the implementation of those contracts, so that's why we're having this meeting today, to hopefully get a 10-1 start date on this. The parties that are involved in medical self-insurance, there's a decent amount of players in the game. First, you have the employer, which obviously is us. You will have an insurance consultant or a broker that you work with, and we'll talk about the rules of each of these in the next coming slides. There's a third-party administrator, a medical network that you work with, and a stop-loss carrier. So we'll talk about each one of these now. You already know who we are, Delhi Township, so I didn't put a slide on that one. The insurance consultant that we are going to work with is Cheryl Morgan. They're very well-versed in self-insurance in the area. They currently work with Greentownship. There's a few other things on here, Harrison, Ohio, City of Bellevue, Bellevue, City of Fort Mitchell, Grant County, Kentucky, so they're very familiar with government self-insurance. The role of Cheryl Morgan, or an insurance broker, is basically to evaluate our benefit needs as the township, go out to different brokers and insurance carriers, I'm sorry, brokers, insurance carriers, and say, you know, here's what the township is looking for as far as insurance, give us your best bid, you know, and pricing and things like that. Once the bids are presented, you know, we work together to figure out what makes the most sense for the township and reduce our risk, and then they'll help us monitor our plans as we go through the year and say, okay, well, we're seeing this in claims, what do we want to do about this? And then obviously evaluate at the end of the year, what changes, if any, do we want to make based upon our claims experience and things of that nature? Okay? A lot of positives, I think, come with working with Cheryl Morgan, and the fact that they work with Greentownship, they have an onsite health clinic, or onsite health and wellness center that Green is going to be opening, I think, believe at the beginning of this year, or this coming year, in January. So that's something that, now that we're in the self-insurance realm, they can contract a much lower price than you would maybe get, like, at a regular physician's office, so therefore reducing maybe our overall costs and potentially the employees' cost as well. So that's really one exciting part that I'm excited about in partnering with them. Yes, sorry, I thought there was something else there. The third-party administrator, I look at these guys as basically your anthems of the world in self-insurance. So what they do, their role as an organization, is to process claims. So they get the claims in, they pay the claims in the different physicians and hospitals, they get us our, you know, our benefit card, you know, your enrollment card, that kind of thing. They field questions, customer service, phone line questions that employees might have, oh, is this person in my network, that kind of thing, okay? And they also are the ones that contract with the network carrier, so like, you know, we have Anthem, that's our carrier, that's our network that we go with, and they set up that we're going to be working with, Ohio PPO Connect, which I'll talk about in a minute. But MedMen offers additional claim services to help reduce our costs. When we met with them, they pointed out several things, I thought, that were appealing to us. One thing is they implement a surveillance software. Basically, the software, all their claims get shoved through the software, and the software looks for red flags, like, oh, well, maybe they billed twice for this, because they billed it once here and they billed it once here. And then they have a group of physicians that look at all those, and then they work with the carrier, or the providers, to say, hey, you know, why are you billing for this test here when you also did it here? I mean, what's up with that? Give us a reduced cost on that. So they have some, you know, things in place to help us reduce our costs in that way. They also have 100% RXs as pharmacy, rebates that are returned to the township, sometimes TPAs give a portion of that, sometimes they don't give any, but they're, you know, transparent in that, and they give us all those rebates through pass-through. And their claims payment accuracy rate was 99.6 last year from their report, so I think that's pretty good. If I have that accuracy rate, that'd be pretty good. The medical network is Ohio PPO Connect. They're a statewide network, and sponsored by the four leading provider networks, which is HealthSpan, Health Choice Ohio, our Ohio Health Choice Quality Care Partners in the state of Ohio University Health Plan. I took this from their website. I just went on there today just to make sure, like, you know, just starting to search some doctors and some hospitals. I mean, every major hospital in the area was listed. I mean, you can go in there and type in Hamilton County, and I mean, it's just page upon page of providers and, you know, local physicians, offices, and things like that. And I listed some of the major hospitals here, but, you know, that's something that, you know, I don't think there's going to be very much disruption at all for our employees from going from Anthem to this network, you know, these TPAs, they're not going to be able to be in business if they use networks that are tiny, so I think that we'll be fine Stop-loss carrier, so this is the fun one to explain. A stop-loss carrier is an organization that basically provides the insurance policy part of it for our medical self-insurance plan, and it, they have lots of different financial protections that they can offer and that we have actually opted for to make sure, this is our first venture into self-insurance, we want to make sure that we are covering all of our bases and getting the best protection that we can have until we get our feet wet a little bit more and see where really our claims lie. So the first type of stop-loss coverage is a specific deductible. And what that means is, it's on an individual life basis, so we have about 205 to 210 lives on our plan, so employees or dependents, things like that. So it basically means that if any one employee or dependent were to incur claims over $50,000, that we would be responsible for the $50,000 in claims, and then that stop-loss carrier would reimburse us the rest. So, for example, if we have something catastrophic happen to, you know, hopefully not, but one of our employees, then we would, and it's a million-dollar claim, we would be liable for $50,000, and the rest would be reimbursed by the insurance carrier, the stop-loss carrier. Another nice feature of this particular plan that we chose, and we'll talk about physical numbers after this as well, is what's called a no laser and a no new laser. So what a laser is, is they look at our population, we filled out what's called Form Fire, which I know you guys did, too, so thank you for that, and it basically asks you everything and anything about your medical history over the last 10 years. So the stop-loss carriers, they look at every single one of those, and they say, okay, well, we think this employer-dependent might be a very risky person, so we might put a different specific deductible threshold on them. So instead of $50,000, maybe we'll do $100,000 or even $200,000, depending on what that risk is. Good news is, is on our experience and on this quote, there are no lasers, so we don't have anybody with that high potential risk at this time. And the no-new laser means that at renewal next year, they can enforce a new laser on us. So say something happens over this year, that's, you know, kind of big and catastrophic, they can't now say, oh, well, just kidding, you know, it's going to be $100,000 on this person, we have this protection in place to keep it at that 50. The annual aggregate, this is a basically, a, if you want to, a deductible on the overall claims of the plan. So instead of on an individual basis, you know, we can't go over $50,000, this says, as a township as a whole, all of our employees and dependents, you will not spend over this number in claims. So we'll go over that number in a minute here, but there's a maximum claims dollar amount that we are liable to pay out, and then anything over that, the stop-loss carrier would reimburse. Another protection that we got is what's called an annual aggregate terminal liability option. What that means is, so we're going in self-insurance for the first time, we're going to have a one-year contract with, you know, the TPA and the stop-loss carrier. If for some reason, we hate it, and it's terrible, which I don't foresee happening, but just as an added protection, this is basically saying that, yes, we have this 12-month contract, they're going to pay everything in that 12 months that we've incurred and what they've paid, but then, say somebody goes and has something big, a surgery, we'll say, on 9/29 of 17, and our contract ends 9/30 of 17, that's not going to be paid on 9/30, there's no way the insurance company is going to bill it that fast. So this option basically extends our total aggregate deductible to say, well, you only are liable for that total aggregate deductible even after your term has ended, your policy year has ended, and if anything was incurred, like, they actually got services in that policy year, we'll pay it, you know, over that amount. So that's another added protection that we have in there. The next page is starting to look at the numbers. So basically, there, we've talked about some of these, the stop-loss coverages that we've included. There's a lifetime maximum, which is unlimited, and a policy period maximum, which is unlimited, which basically means if somebody has a very catastrophic event, they're not going to cut them off at some point and say, oh, nope, you've had too many claims, we're not paying them anymore. It's basically just saying that we're going to continue paying those claims for those individuals. We talked about the specific deductible at $50,000, not paying anything over $50,000 for one individual in claims. The specific contract that we have is what's called a 12-12 contract, which is, it's a 12-month contract, so we're going to have 12 months of incurred claims and 12 months of paid claims. Next year, when we look at self-insurance again, we would have a 24-12, because we're going to want to cover ourselves for that gap of claims that are going to be coming in from the previous months that we were under this contract, okay? This is covering all of our medical and our pharmacy, which is a typical, you know, medical program that you see. We talked about the known laser and the known new laser at renewal, so we won't have any of those specific deductibles increased upon. There is a 50% rate cap on our annual specific premium, and we'll look at the dollars in that in a minute, but it's basically saying, if for some reason, again, we, you know, have way more claims than we ever anticipated, they can't charge us more than 50% of what they're already charging. And then an aggregate terminal liability option, we talked about that, you know, basically saying that once the plan year ends, they'll keep paying those claims that were incurred in the plan year, which ends on 9/30, okay? So now for some more fun numbers. It's a little small up there, so I apologize for that. So there, as we talked about, there's different players in this game. The first player in the game is the third-party administrator, and they basically charge a monthly fee per employee per month. So when you look at that on an annual basis, the overall expense is $44,884.80. Keep in mind, these numbers are based on our current enrollment. You know, this is going to fluctuate as our enrollment fluctuates, but that's with any medical plan. I mean, if our enrollment fluctuates with Anthem, we're going to be paying more if more people enroll, less if they don't enroll. Then the next four lines in green show what that specific deductible is, so that's our protection at that $50,000 range, based on if they choose single employee plus spouse, employee plus child, or a family deductible, and based on our enrollment, that comes out to roughly $173,000, a little less than that, per year. The aggregate premium rate, so this is our protection to not go over a certain threshold in claims dollars as a whole. So there's a just per employee, per month, member cost for that, and on an annual basis, that's $9,011. And then these next things in green are not numbers, those other numbers at the top are set in stone based on enrollment. Those are not going to change. These next four numbers in green, where it says monthly single aggregate factor down to monthly family aggregate factor, those are what they expect in claims for those types of enrollment, okay? So, and actually, that's the maximum expectation, not just like what we think is going to happen, so I spoke there a little bit. That's the maximum of what they think they're going to spend if they're a family, is $775 a month, times 12, gets me to my annual figure. So if you look at... family is $775 a month times 12 gets me to my annual figure. So if you look at that, it's that 4,900, I'm sorry, 4,000, that would be good. $4,900 would be great. Why didn't you guys get us that rate? Roughly $496,000, a little less than that. So that's the max in claims that we will have to pay out, you know, worst-case scenario kind of thing, in, in claims dollars. So that's where it says max claims, second line from the bottom. Their expected claims, however, are more like 396,000, 397,000, somewhere in that range. So then if you look at this last page, we kind of pull it all together. So the first three lines are fixed costs. So this is our expected total annual costs. When you look at everything all together, this top spreadsheet here. So the total annual specific, which is that $50,000 limit and the annual aggregate deductible, which is that overall cost, all those protections cost $181,000 or 100, almost 182. The consultants fees are 17,500 and the TPA fees, as we already talked about, are close to $45,000. Then when you add the expected claims costs in there, our total annual expected costs are 640,000, six, close to 641. Okay? So that's where they expect us to end up. If I looked at our enrollment today, we're expected to spend about $844,000. So a decent amount of savings, potential savings. If you look at the next one, those first three lines, like I said, those aren't going to change unless our enrollment changes. And then, you know, annual, oh, I put expected, that should be maximum cost. Sorry about that. So that's 495,000, almost 496. So when you add all that together, you're looking at close to $740,000. When you think about that versus our 844 that we're probably going to be paying Anthem, that's a decent amount of savings. One thing I do want to talk about though, you know, this is the way that we're looking at funding the plan. That doesn't mean that our plan design is going to change. So like from an employee perspective right now, it's going to stay the same. The way that they'll be affected in the immediate future on 10-1 is the network. So we'll make sure, and we're going to work hard with Cheryl Morgan and get the communication out to the employees to say, hey, here's your new network. This is what you can do. Any deductibles that they've hit up until this point, that's going to carry on through the end of the year, just like we were with Anthem. So really, it's just going to be a small communication piece that employees might need to do between, you know, here's my explanation of benefits from Anthem, giving that to MedMen and really working with them to say, hey, you know, make sure that my claims match up, basically. So, you know, and that, and honestly, that's going to have to happen, kind of like whenever we make this move, you know, because they're going to, you know, be trying to build Anthem for things and that kind of thing. So the plan design's not going to change. There are some very minor possible network changes. So we'll need to make sure that we're communicating to employees, make sure your doctor's in the new network. You know, and we plan to meet with the healthcare committee in the very near future to look at, you know, okay, here's what our plan design is. Again, we're not really doing anything with that right now. And, you know, when we look at 1-1 of 17, when we go through open enrollment here and, you know, in the winter months for a new plan year in 17, you know, we're really not looking to change a whole lot. We're hoping just to kind of stay steady, just because we've not done self-insurance before. So we're not really sure what our claims experience is going to look like. And we don't want to drastically change things and have too many factors that we're changing at once. We want to keep it steady where we're comfortable. And then once we have more claims experience under our belt, we'll look at what that looks like. And the one really awesome thing that I'm very excited about with self-insurance is you have so much control over your plan. Right now, I have to say, okay, Anthem, that's what you give me, that's what we're going to take. You know, I can't change around deductibles. I can't change, you know, copayments to drugs. I can't, I can't do any of that. You know, but as we get claims data, and we're going to get a lot, and it's not individualized, I won't know anybody's specific claim data. It's just aggregate overall data. But I might see that, well, you know what, maybe we have several diabetics and they're not taking their medications. Well, let's reduce the, you know, copayment to diabetic medication so that we can help them be in compliance and therefore reduce our claims costs. So those are things I can't do right now. And, you know, and every group is different on what their claims are. And it gives us the opportunity to really mold our plan to what we want it to be. And what's the most beneficial for the, for the township and ultimately the taxpayers? So, I'm trying to think if there's anything that I missed. There's a lot of information there, so.
A couple, a little thing. Well, this is one reason why we're doing wellness.
Yes.
Because just think of, each employee can almost imagine that they are now co-owners of their health insurance plan.
Yes.
They're, you know, we have some protections of insurance policies that help us protect us against catastrophic. But really, other than that, every time, once they meet their deductibles, every time they go to a doctor, every time they buy a prescription, every time they do that, the township is paying dollar for dollar, where we used to pay just, you know, the premium to Anthem. So now, of course, the better that employees can be healthy, that's why we're stressing wellness. And, and if you haven't registered for your...
I have signup sheets here today if you want to register.
She'll take care of you. I, I, I'm registered for the 28th myself, so I'm going to get a little blood there on my finger. But anyway, you know, every dime we can save theirs is a, is a savings for the employees as well. But I did want to stress, and I know I've talked to the board, that there is a level of commitment, but I want to dispel any thinking that, oh, the savings and that means our insurance is going to be less. The one thing that this money, the difference that you're seeing, is we have to build a reserve. We have to have a fund balance reserve. We're creating tonight, there's a resolution on that creates a self-insurance fund, which we have to have funding in there to be able to pay claims. So I know the board has been, has acknowledged to me that they are committed at continuing to fund self-insurance at the same level that we have been. And understanding next year that automatically there's going to be increases, because she, Lisa mentioned that we went, we're at a 12-12 and we'll go go to a 12-24, meaning we'll pick up a new 12 months, but then we have to allow for the past 12 months, and that's where you get to 24th, for claims to come back in. So automatically, next year, our amounts here will go up just because our coverage period will be more. One of the savings this year is, and this is how we're going to start building immediate fund balances, we end Anthem 9/30. Well, even if I go to the doctor 10-1, I go in there, that doctor and anything else I have done for services is not going, by the time they bill and go through all the process, you know, it's almost two months later by the time the bill ends up on somebody's desk to say, hey, you have to pay this. So you're looking at a month and a half to two months that the township will not be, will get the administrative monthly fees to pay Cheryl Morgan, to pay the third-party administrator and all those. But the actual claim dollars won't start for, you know, about till the begin, end of the second month to beginning of the third month. Those dollars need to immediately banked into our fund reserve. And any, let, let's pretend we spend $840,000 this year is our quote-unquote budget that we're going to, you know, for 16. We acknowledge that, hey, we want to put the same amount towards it in 17. And let's say if we hit our max at 740, well, that will still be $100,000 that goes into the fund balance at a minimum. If we only do 640, you may have $200,000 that begins to build that fund reserve. But then that is when, after the first year, as she said, that we begin then to look at what are our actual claims? How much were they? What, where, you know, we know so much more information. Because we are employer, under 100, under 100 employees, we get zero claim information. So that's why you have to do the Form Fire and we have to ask everybody what they've done for the last 10 years. Being self-insured, we'll get from the health insurance, from our TPA, I take it, the claims data, again, not specific, but it helps us identify those issues. And we'll be much more aware where we can target wellness, where we can, what may be coming. We see a, a issue arising that, ooh, okay, that may be a bigger claim in the future. Or, or we're seeing a, you know, a progression or something of something. So I just don't want the board to say, hey, you know, we only spent 640 this year and we're going to pocket that and that's just going, no, there's going to be continual investment in building up the fund reserve. Because the one thing Cheryl Morgan and actually Hyland warned us about, every two to three years, you're going to go do this, you're going to go into those reserves, you're going to have a bad year. And that's where you can't get cold feet. You can't say, oh, my gosh, the sky is falling. There's one thing you have to remember is, one, you, when you pay Anthem, that year that you have all that, you know, that's why we kept getting 20% renewals, right? So you got to remember, we may, you know, see an increase and we may have to do 5% or something like that. Or, you know, one year, we may have 0% increase. And then we can tweak our plan designs exactly to help better benefits for our employees and all that good stuff. But we have to be on the same page. And I, I believe the board is committed to continuing to fund this at, at the right rate. And that right rate will be determined in the future based on what we see in claims, but to protect the fund balance and to protect those bad years, you know, simply put. But it's an exciting time. It's, it's scary to some degree, but we have talked to Springfield Township, Green Township, these townships that have been self-insured and they said, don't look back. Just do it. You won't regret it. It's the way to go. You're not paying the profit right away. Think of Anthem, the profit. Every time they charge us, there's profit built into that. Well, we're not paying that. The profit stays with us and the employees and with the benefits that we can provide. And also some of the ACA expenses, legal expenses, that, you know, the Affordable Care Act has all these fees built into it. Some of those we also save since we're on self-insurance. So it's an exciting time. Again, we do have Cheryl Morgan here, representatives, if there's any specific questions on the liability, the, you know, it is a risk. We tried to build in the stopgap and, and all the advice of Cheryl Morgan is expert, are experts in the self-insurance to protect the township, to protect the employees, to protect the citizens of Delhi. You know, we don't want to go bankrupt because we made a, a bad decision. So we, we try to have at every step, there's, well, if this happens, worst-case scenario, you're only going to pay this. And right now, the dollars work out. Worst-case scenario, we're still ahead of the game. And things change fast. And I will say this, we had a quote from one of the other providers and it made it really interesting that their quote, and it wasn't Anthem. We haven't got any quote from Anthem, but the renewal will be within a month or so. But we had another quote from another major insurance carrier that tried to make it interesting or intriguing on what they tried to offer. Even Hyland said, you know, that's pretty intriguing. That, that's close to our total maximum. It was really close to that. But the issue here is, you know, we just got ourselves in the position by certain things, employees leaving and the different statuses changing to where we are now have some bad experience off of our record and are ready to move forward. And, and we could be kind of like a fishing lure and throwing some bait. Are you going to take the hook to, to stay in full, fully insured? Or while you got the motive, while we've got our record clean, to go ahead and step into the self-insurance realm. And that's our advice and recommendation that we go ahead. I think Cheryl Morgan agrees with that assumption as well. And I, I think we have a good opportunity to, to make a good change and good future benefits for our employees. Because, you know, as the board knows, you guys scratched your head every year, another 20%, another 20%, another 20%. And if catastrophic stuff happens, Anthem, United Healthcare, whoever it is, they're going to get their money back. So they may offer you a lower premium one year, but then the next two, three years, you're paying 20, 25, 30% increases in that. So if you keep that in mind, you know, as long as you build that fund reserve, you'll weather the bad years and save in the good years and so forth. So very exciting time. Any questions by the board?
I was about to ask that, Trustee Oswald.
There's a lot of information there. As the board, we've been dealing with this, well, since 2014, we've been dealing with healthcare. So just so everyone understands, not get lost from the trees, from the forest, because there's very detailed, specific information we're giving. Here's a scenario we're in. Back in 2014, when we take the board, the Affordable Care Act was not in place at that point. We were looking at, at health insurance. We would shop it every year, look at various companies. Well, then Affordable Care Act came in. We started to see 15, 20% increases, no matter where we shopped it. What it does, it puts us in a difficult position because do we pass those costs to our employees or do we eat it as a township? Last year, we decided to put that on our department heads and find more money in the budgets. What then it does is deplete our levies and our levy cycle goes out a lot quicker. And now we have to run a levy and we go to the taxpayers and hit them because of the Affordable Care Act. So we're in this problem that we know every year we're going to get hit with 15, 20% on healthcare. So we have looked at various options. We shopped around. We even talked to a co-op that denied us because we are a smaller group. We had some catastrophic problems or bad claims. And so we, we're in this problem. And what we're seeing is, we can't continue this pattern. We're getting hit with 15 to 20%. We're passing it off to our department heads to try to find the money and levy money. So by doing this, it gives us a lot of predictability. It gives us insurance in the future. If we do this properly and build our fund, it will give us predictability as to our budget, as to our funds, everything. And long-term, we're going to be better off. Now, the main concern is, okay, what about the employee? How does that change me specifically? And like you said, Lisa said, the, the plan designs are going to be same. We offer three plan designs right now. They're going to be similar. So really, we don't expect any change to the employee as far as the cost or the benefits. You said the network, maybe, but I would be surprised. And if there is an issue, you're going to work to fix that, obviously.
We can work with the TPA to try to get certain, if there's somebody that we really want in our network, try to get that in our network.
Right. And there's additional benefits. You said potential refunds. We have the Wellness Center that we don't have now. So just so everyone understands, what we're looking at contextually over the last three years, we're seeing these costs rise, 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 and it's not stopping. By doing this long-term, we can cap it. We have predictability for budgets. Our department heads aren't going to have their levies depleted. And the employees should be in the same position. Now, in the future, if we build a reserve and we can start making other decisions as to employee costs and what additional benefits we could give back to them. But at this point, we need to cap this thing before we get nailed and we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars more every year. So I just want to summarize that and, and assure that the employees, because I know that's the number one question, how, how is it going to change for the employees? And hopefully that answered a lot of it. If you have any other additional questions, feel free to ask. But I just want to make sure, because there's a lot of specific information there. But in a nutshell, that's where we're at.
Trustee Sturts.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Lisa and Pete for the amount of hours you put in to, to make this happen and provide as concise information as you could. So thank you on behalf of everybody for that. And I do want to encourage all of our employees to do the wellness check. It takes 15 minutes. I've done mine because I already, I believe in leading by example. And so please, everybody come and, and have that done. I do have one little question. I understand the stop-loss.
Okay.
And I understand laser.
Okay.
New employees come in, they do the Form Fire or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Could they possibly fall underneath a, a different, no. So we are, from here on out, no matter who we hire.
And I'll, I'll double-check with Cheryl Morgan, but a no laser, no new laser means no matter new employees coming on, they're, we're already under contract with that.
Okay. So it is a really good time to do this.
Yes.
Before we run into a, a problem like, like
Correct.
Trustee Oswald said. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I, I too want to thank all of you who have been involved in, in getting this to come to an end. Because I don't want the residents to think we just saw this for the first time and took a vote on it. This has been a subject of executive session for months. And being fiscal officer before, I have seen those increases, double-digit, double-digit, double-digit. And I have also talked to Green Township and how satisfied they are and how pleased their employees are with their coverage. And I think what we're trying to do here is to make a balance. Because we want to provide the best healthcare we can to our employees and stay within the parameter of a budget. So by establishing, and I think, Mr. Luby, you've done something on this restricted fund.
Okay.
Okay, that we will be having this in our accounting right there for self-insurance. It's, it's the way of the future. And I think we're very confident in making this decision. We are very confident. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Pete. Dave, I think you had a piece of this too, so.
He's got more to come.
Thank you, Mr. Law Director.
He has to review thoroughly all the contracts. So these contracts, just to let you know what's coming up then, all these contracts for, will be on September 28th, the third-party administrator, the Cheryl Morgan, the stop-loss and...
Business associate agreement with Cheryl Morgan, but yeah.
Okay.
So.
So all those will be on 9/28. So all those will be on 9/28 effective 10/1. And Cheryl Morgan immediately is going to start working with us on car, insurance cards and getting all the notices out to the employees, hey, effective 10/1, you know, all of that. So we'll be communicating with the employees so they're not caught off guard. It's just massive changes and we, of course, bank accounts we've got to do and a whole bunch of stuff still to come, but it'll, it'll be, it'll be good.
I see Lieutenant Braun here from the Fire Department Union. And I, did you catch Lieutenant Braun, that you will be having meetings to cover all these questions so that you can cover anything that's individual at that time, right, Lisa?
Yep. My door is always open. Feel free to call me anytime.
Super. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee correspondence then. Trustee Oswald.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Sturts.
I just wanted to reiterate about the Antique Roadshow. I attended. Unfortunately, my items were not worth as much as we thought they were, but that's okay. The most expensive item was an Egyptian urn, which the owner referred to as the earliest tupperware, because it was what people stored things in back in Egypt, back in the day. And it was valued at $2,500 and the owner has three of them. So that was kind of fun. But, you know, again, I want to thank the bicentennial committee and the Historical Society for bringing him in. It was a lot of fun that afternoon.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, we would really like to extend congratulations to Brian Sunderhouse and Joe Abel on their promotion to career firefighter paramedics. We would also like to extend congratulations on your promotion to First Lieutenant Dave Benkin. So we're so proud to be able to have those promotions from within. So thank you, Delhi Fire, for keeping, keeping them on the bench and moving them through. It's wonderful.
We'll work on, excuse me, we will work on a ceremony, swearing in, swearing ceremony for them.
Great. We'll have a, super. Stay tuned, swearing in ceremony.
I can see that.
All right. Report from the fiscal officer?
Our next FAB board meeting will be on Tuesday, September 20th, 5:30 here in the Adnan Building.
Thank you. No need for public hearings. Reports from departments. I believe we have Juan Greg DeLong, Community Development Director.
This will be a repeat from the Delhi Business Association meeting this morning, but, and I'll interject here and there, but let Greg take the lead, please, sir.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give you an update on economic development efforts. We hope this will, this is an update, but also to help answer some questions that we've been hearing throughout the community of just things going on.
You don't hear rumors, do you?
No, we never hear rumors at all. Never at all. One thing we want to talk about was, what is economic development? We are a division within the Department of Community Development, which also contains the divisions of planning and zoning. This is kind of a new office for the township. We are responsible for the day-to-day coordination of business development and growth in the township. And we also work closely with the township trustees and our elected officials and the administration on meeting our goals and objectives that are found in our plans and regulations. What plans does the, or what plans guide the development of the township? We have the primary plan to guide development within the township is the Plan the Pike, Delhi Township Strategic Redevelopment Plan. This was adopted back on November 23rd of 2015. Additionally, we use our zoning map and our zoning resolution to assist us in land use regulations for the township. Just to kind of give you a little history of what we used to get where we are. What are some of the key components of the plan? It provides a long-range vision of Delhi Pike with five-year incremental goals. It initiates strategies for catalytic redevelopment on aging commercial properties and provides guidance in updating the township zoning resolution. And this includes increased design standards, landscaping standards, parking standards, and sign standards. This is actually an ongoing project that you will be seeing soon, where we are creating a new zoning district for the Pike, which will address the topics within the plan. What are some of the current challenges we have in implementing the plan? And this question kind of comes up to address, like, why aren't we seeing things happening so quickly? Asking prices for land on the Pike has substantially skyrocketed since we have adopted the plan. It has actually deterred some developers from developing on the Pike. We have heard this from various developers we've communicated with. We are working with property owners to kind of talk to them about their value that they're expecting for their land. We have some parcels of land, if you break it down by per acre, cost, they're asking $2.4 million per acre. Averages out to about $550,000 for about a quarter acre piece of land. So for developers, that's a deterrent because they have to make a living off of doing their development. And then when they try to recruit users for their properties, they have to ask really high rents and it just doesn't work for them. So it is kind of a deterrent right now, so it is one of our challenges, but we'll keep working with the property owners to get through that. Another thing is the cost of redeveloping currently built upon properties can be very costly. It's a lot more expensive to do that than it is for greenfields, especially on Delhi Pike. We have existing buildings that will need to be removed. Then you also have to do the environmental. So sometimes it's the unknown with the environmental. You just don't know what you're getting into, and that could be very costly to remedy. And also, we're running into issues with finding available funding opportunities to offset the gap financing. And we, as a township, are limited on what we can provide. We do have TIF and JED funds that we'll be able to possibly use to assist them, but that's only going to be for public infrastructure such as sidewalks, curb cuts, you know, if any utility upgrades in the right-of-way, we could use it for demolition, but we cannot help them with the bones and structure, or the bones of their buildings and getting the buildings constructed. We have had discussions with certain developers and instances, there are up to $3.5 million in gap financing that they need to find. So it is a challenge.
Right. And that's why I'll interject just two quick things. And one, you know, the two biggest hurdles of this gap, when developers are saying, we got too big of a gap, it is the price of the land. That's probably number one. And number two is the cost of the financing. So we have been working with the Port of Greater Cincinnati and others to, that can offer, that we can work with developers to get a low interest rate deal so that, we think we may have help with those issues. And of course, like he said, I will say this, TIF funds and of course, if we enter a JED agreement with a user, you know, we've been asked for TIF funds before for certain projects, but of course, I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, board, but, you know, before the township's going to utilize TIF or JED funds, it must meet the vision of the township that we have put into the plan. I mean, we did this plan for a reason. This is where we see and want the Pike to go. And, you know, we're not going to invest, say, TIF dollars into things that do not meet the plan, have no, do not enhance, do not benefit the township that, you know, according to what we felt like the plan did. So I did want to state that, but the price of the land, I will just, I will be really bold to say, I mean, property owners can ask for whatever they want. It's their land. We're not the developers. But I'm telling you, developers are walking. They are not even asking or negotiating with landowners that are purely just asking three, four, five times the amount that it should be. And what's sad is, some of them, some of them have put on their listing, their real estate listing, that this, this site is part of the economic development plan for the township and then justify their price with that. I mean, that's all said and good, but when things get developed around them, hopefully, they're going to be sitting with a vacant parcel that they probably may, may, you know, you wish you should have, would have, could have done something so much nicer, but, you know, it may be sitting vacant because of their asking price. So please, people, I mean, I just appeal to landowners that, you know, this vision is good. It is going to be for a limited time that, hey, we have direction, we have vision, we have momentum moving forward. But if people are going to try to, you know, ask unreasonable rates, it's just, it's not going to work because the entire plan was based on certain pricing. It was a price point of the plan, that this plan could be done at X price. And if you're at XYZ plus ABC price, it's just not going to work.
Another thing we're hearing is, where are we at with the plan's implementation? We're really at the point where it's behind-the-scenes activity going on. I know the community wants to see a shovel in the ground, as Cheryl likes to say, or Trustee Seavey, but, you know, it is, we are working hard and that is something we want the community to know. We are at that stage where, you know, it is a lot of talking with developers, realtors, you know, dealing with this land value issue. So we are working hard. We are continuing to market the township in the Pike to prospective businesses and developers. Again, it's that challenge of winning them over and getting them to, you know, realize the value of the Pike. Finalizing the zoning resolution is a key thing we need to complete. As I said, that will come before you soon. Right now, if a developer came in the door, it would be hard for us to tell them no. Our current regulations will allow the massive parking lots out front with big buildings sitting way far away from the road. Our plan is calling for a walkable neighborhood with mixed-use development. So our new zoning district will allow for the mixed-use, which will allow the residential component, because currently, right now, residential is prohibited on Delhi Pike. And then we're going to also be getting work here soon on the Delhi Pike, our bike path economic analysis study, which is again funded through Hamilton County, so it is no cost to the township. When we mentioned that this morning at the Business Association, the Mount reps were over there applauding us. So they were happy to see a project like this hopefully coming in the future for their students and employees. So that was very nice to see that support. Again, here's a question, is when is the township going to develop properties? Currently, the properties are primarily privately owned on the Pike, so we are limited, so we have to work with them. We do have two properties the CIC recently purchased, and we can talk a little bit about that later on here. And like Pete mentioned, the township is not in the business of being developers. So we have to recruit, partner, and assist with relationships between developers and landowners, and we're doing a pretty good job of that, bringing all the parties, like Pete mentioned, the Port Authority, who can assist with financing, to the table with them, so we can get these projects hopefully going soon. And the township can also, is also encouraging the redevelopment land. We cannot force it to happen. Again, that's a key thing. Since we don't own land except two small parcels, we cannot force redevelopment, but we can encourage it. So again, it's a tough, it's a tough road ahead and it's a tough road behind us, but we'll get there. It just takes time, unfortunately. When is the township going to clean up properties on Delhi Pike? And this is one question we hear quite a bit of, and that is talking about dilapidated structures, broken windows, facades that may be falling apart. Currently, the township only has a nuisance code, which only allows us to regulate excessive vegetation, junk vehicles, and debris. A separate code, which the township does not have in place, is what you call property maintenance code, and that regulates exterior of buildings, facades, paint, roof conditions, gutters, pretty much anything with the structures. And as I've said, we do not have a code like that. There's many obstacles with having a code like that if we decided to go down that path right now. A lot of it has to do with staffing. We have one zoning inspector who covers the whole township, and it takes really three of us right now to keep up with just our nuisance code. So we're all chipping in to help out there. Just cost with additional staffing, cost with legal, legal costs that may come along with taking, you know, property owners to court. And you also can't pick and choose. You know, we have to be equal with everyone. So while you may see one building that looks really, really bad over here, you may have a nice little house over here that has a gutter falling off, we have to treat them equally. So that's a challenge too, and that puts a burden on the property owners, especially when it gets into the residential component. They may not have funding to fix their properties. There are programs through Hamilton County, a lot of that's income-eligible. So it's kind of, you know, something out there that could help, but not a guarantee to help them. And currently, the township, we are doing what we can do with the, with the regulations we have adopted and legally can follow, and that is kind of cleaning up the signs on Delhi Pike. And I think when you drive down the Pike, you can definitely see a big improvement with the temporary signs. They're still out there, but they're pushed out of the right-of-way, so you do have like a nice, clear vision. I always tell people, drive kind of on, like, maybe Cleve's Warsaw. You can tell from one side of the road to the other who's enforcing sign regulations. It's just, it looks good, you know? So we are doing what we can. It does clean up the appearance of the Pike and, you know, and people are noticing it. We're actually hearing more compliments than complaints, which is a good thing. So here are some of the fun questions we're hearing from the community about the plan. Why hasn't any development started? Our plan is nine months old. That's one of the things. Second, we really need to get our zoning put in place to get what we want out of any developments that come along. Like I said, our new zoning code will now require landscape islands in parking lots. Current code, it's something you can opt out of. Building setbacks will be close to the streets. Increased design standards. So you're not going to have a building on a corner that may just look like it has one entrance. You're going to have design standard features on all sides. So we're going to do stuff like that. Regulating signs is going to be a big one. Pole signs will not be permitted anymore, is the proposal. So you'll see more ground-mounted signs. It's going to dress up the Pike tremendously, give it that walkable feeling. Another question we have is, the plan is calling for a CVS to be built. Where is it? Again, you know, the plan was calling for a pharmacy, a potential pharmacy, at the location of the east of Greenwell Site, which is the Delhi Chili. Again, it's a vision. You know, it's, it was called out in the plan. We can't make it happen. We can try our best to recruit somebody there. It has been attempted by a developer to recruit CVS there, and it just unfortunately was not their time yet. So there's a lot of variables that go into it from, from what we were talking about earlier, land values, and certain businesses also have standards on traffic counts. We think Delhi Pike is busy, but it may not have the traffic counts that other, that businesses do require for minimum. So there are obstacles. Why isn't the township controlling the types of uses opening up on the Pike? Unfortunately, we are hearing some comments about some new users on the Pike. You know, I think there are residents in the community that feel they're probably less than desirable types of uses. Our current code does allow them to be there. Our future code would allow them to be there because they do fall under what we would classify as a retail use or a medical use. So it's kind of hard for us to start saying, we want you, we can't allow you, when you're all kind of under the same umbrella as a retail or medical or something, some type of category. So it is a question we do hear a lot of. I'll let Pete answer the next one, but we do get a few questions on what's going to happen to the soon-to-be vacated fire station.
And of course, that's the plan, you know, unless miracles still happen, you know, we're looking at March at, you know, probably the earliest time period. But with the catalytic site of the old Delhi Chili, you know, we are, would entertain for redevelopment of that. Currently, the house next to the firehouse and the fire station itself are still zoned residential. So even if right now, we kicked out our fire guys and said, hey, we sold this to AB Body Shop, everybody thinks, man, that would make a, you know, two-door, two-garage bay, maybe somebody's little mechanic could work on something like that. Nope, that couldn't happen because it's zoned residential. So a body shop couldn't even, or a mechanic couldn't even take ownership and make that a business. It could not be because it's not zoned that. But it'd be in a firehouse. Firehouse can sit in residential and zoning allows for that. But with the firehouse, you know, we're entertaining for redevelopment of the entire Delhi Chili Pike, Delhi Chili Corner. We're entertaining, of course, with just proposals of what we would do with the firehouse, whether sell or with a JED agreement or something of that nature, what we could do. But we want to definitely encourage all, because we, you're talking a lot of dilapidated and empty buildings right there. So we would hope to help spur development with bait of a firehouse, the old property, to get something accomplished there. So nothing's concrete whatsoever yet, but we have till March till it's even empty. But that's kind of the thinking. We're not really going to sell it. It can't be really used as a business, although with the new zoning standards, the zoning in that area will be changed. I think with us owning that property, that can help us have a stake in what does go there, because I think if, you know, somebody wants, says, oh, we want to build this, this, and this, we can say, well, you're not getting our firehouse if that's what you're going to build there. So that puts us in a good position to hopefully help dictate to some degree what can go in there, you know, within reason. there, you know, within reason. So, that answers that.
Yep. And then, another question we hear is why is the township buying properties on Delhi Pike? And as you're aware, the CIC, which is an economic development arm of the township, has been purchased, they purchased two properties. But you know, this is a key thing for economic development efforts. You purchase them in the hope that you can accumulate more land to spur economic development in the future. So, we do have two properties now. We're hoping to, in the future, to purchase more, then we can work with a developer to get, we kind of get into development field, I guess, but we're not developers. But we can offer up land and get some development started in certain areas of the Pike. So, we do have the CIC, which is doing that. So, that is why the township is, or the township's CIC is buying properties on Delhi Pike. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, Pete?
Well, yeah, just pretty much again, just like we'd use the firehouse as so-called collateral or encouragement from a developer, that we could, you know, the CIC, Community Investment Improvement Corporation, like you said, the arm of, of economic development of the township. But in, in doing that, we could hopefully spur development. And again, we could hopefully encourage the type of development, you know, not only based on our strategic redevelopment plan, but also kind of dictate if we're going to be offering the land, what are we going to get? Hopefully, a jet agreement, hopefully, you know, a certain type of business, or, or home, or mixed-use retail that we would want. So, it gives us a little motivation and a little shove to help development actually occur, and that's what we want. We want development to occur.
One thing, if I could mention, you know, Pete talked about the high costs of real estate right now, the asking prices. We did pay what I, what we believe fair prices for both of those properties as well.
Yes, yes. And the analysis Greg did shows that we're within the average of the, of the pricing. It's just the other properties that are for sale right now are five times the amount. So, it's, yep. And that's just properties across the street from, you know, and right down the street from, from these properties. So, it's not like it's vastly different types of properties. And it's not because of the buildings either. The buildings are going to be tore down. I mean, the buildings that we're seeing for sale, they're not, just like Central Hardware, you know, we're probably not going to get a reuse of that building. It's going to need tore down. So, people can't necessarily justify cost of, that they're asking for properties due to the actual buildings are worth that. That's just not the case.
Another question we hear, which I found quite funny myself, is did the township hire additional staff to pull signs? I guess it's good people see us out in the public, but we are doing this as a team effort in departments, so, and Public Works has been a big help with us too, just to pull some of the more difficult signs, since they have the tools and equipment. So, there are probably a few more people you may see that you typically don't see around, out pulling some signs, but we have not hired any additional staff to do this. So, we are just doing what we're, what our code allows us to do, and in the direction we've been given to do. And then, a question we get all the time is what businesses are coming to the township and when? That is one we would love to be able to answer. We just have confidentiality things we've got to work with. As soon as it is public record, we're more than happy to share it. One of the things, this presentation that we did this morning with the DBA, and we hope tonight comes out, is we are transparent. We will share with you and the public what we can. It's just when it comes to this economic development, confidentiality is important. If things get out, developers will walk. So, it's one of those things we'll do the best we can in being transparent and share the things, but that we're kind of sometimes limited. So, that is pretty much all I've got. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Well, since you brought up that shovel. I only say that in jest, because I also believe and understand that this is not a sprint. This is a marathon, and nine months is a short amount of time to even start some of the conversations frankly that you two have already started. I mean, people are amazed that you're making that kind of progress with nine months. So, everyone out there who I get asked about the redevelopment, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. We want to get it right and have it long-lasting.
Yeah, and thank you for verifying that. I've worked in communities, and I'm not going to be positive here, but you can do a plan, and developers won't talk to you for five, 10 years. We are very fortunate to be in the situation, situation we're in right now, and you know, we, we are hoping here soon to have some really good news for the community, and I think it's on the horizon, pretty soon.
Thank you, Greg, for doing this, both for DBA and for us, because there are some questions out there, and I really felt like the residents needed somewhat of an update. So, thank you.
We'll do it anytime for you.
Good.
Thanks.
Okay. Reading of the resolutions, Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-187, resolution approving purchase order obligations, and current on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order, purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-188, resolution authorizing the establishment of a reserve balance account as a separate internal service fund to provide for the payment of claims and deductibles under an individual self-insurance program, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum? Did you have anything to add?
No, this is exactly the account we're talking about, that we needed to create the reserve account for the reserve fund.
Okay.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-189, resolution entering into agreement, electric service agreement with Dynegy Energy Services East LLC, DBA Dynegy Energy Services LLC, Dynegy, for the provisions of electric service for a three-year term commencing with the meter reading on May 2000, in May 2017, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, like again, Mr. Landrum?
This was a, we were currently under a 30, I think it was a 39-month contract for our facilities. This, since we're, we can't join the residential aggregation program because we're not a residence, this is, you know, commercial buildings. We contract with, 39 months ago, we entered into a contract with a price. Right now, it's been under, Energy Alliance has suggested who we work with through our aggregation. I had approached them, because of knowing that in May, this comes up, it ends our contract period, so we wanted to go ahead, and it was under their professional advice that we go ahead and enter into an agreement now, locking in our rate, which is higher than 39 months ago, so to speak, but it's going to be better now than it will be if we'd waited till, till May. So, this helps us on our electric costs for all the township facilities. We may have to do an amendment come March or so, or April, for the new firehouse, which they said we would simply do an amendment for that, that, but that will lock in a price .0510 is, is what this contract is for, for price, for a three-year.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-190, resolution declaring certain property no longer, no longer needed for public use, obsolete and unfit for the use acquired, authorizing sale by internet auction, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
For the surplus, we do have the chassis for the 2010, that was the old ambulance that we had a new, when we're taking delivery of that chief, pretty soon. So, we'll, we should have the chassis back pretty soon then as well, or chassis is already back. So, we'll be doing the internet auction on the chassis, and then a field striper that, from the Parks Department, and a power edge server from IT Department. Will be all gov deals.
Okay.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-191, resolution authorizing participation and, and execution by the police chief of a memorandum of participation and collaboration agreement in the Northeast Hamilton County Drug Abuse Reduction Task Force, also known as DART, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Discussion on this resolution, Chief Howard.
Thank you, President. This is, as you can see from the MOU, pretty simple. We would be the 18th agency to enter DART. It's a task force that works throughout Hamilton County, and even outside the county sometimes when the task force has to do drug work outside. So, this would give us the ability, the only commitment is, is we become a task force, a agency member of the task force. It gives me the ability to detail an officer into the task force and actually work inside the task force. Once I detail somebody into the task force, it's usually a year, 18-month commitment. If manpower gets bad, and we have some officers go down on injury leave, I can always pull them out and put them back on the street. So, we're at that time and that, the ability where I think I can put somebody in there in very short time. They will be detailed to basically Delhi Township and some other surrounding agencies to look at drug complaints and work drug complaints. We looked at our certain options of what we could do, three different options of how we could best utilize an officer to do drug work in Delhi Township, and, and we came to this conclusion that DART is the best means for us to do that. Although, we're putting one officer in, it's kind of taking them off the road. It's kind of twofold. It's attacking our drug issues that we have, plus we have additional manpower to help that officer, that Delhi officer do it. All the other members of the task force would assist them, so, her, her.
They team together.
Correct.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-192, resolution authorizing the township administrator to accept the proposal from Mobile Comm for the installation of the house alert system at Station 36, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
Yes, this is a part of the firehouse project. This is outside of the Turner Construction Agreement. This is for a house alert system, which we knew we would take ownership of doing that ourselves. So, this is a, an agreement with Mobile Comm, and this locks in our, although we wouldn't probably be installing this until probably February or so, towards the end of the project, this locks in the price now, which for the complete alert system is, locks in our price at $36,441.46.
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-193, resolution entering into a facilities use agreement with ICAN Gymnastics LLC for the provision of an after-school afternoon gymnastics tumbling program for the community at the Delhi Senior Center, Community Center, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Discussion on this resolution, Josh Torbeck from Parks.
Thank you, trustees. This is to continue our relationship with ICAN Gymnastics, a great organization. They are offering an after-school program on Mondays at the senior center. It's tumbling, American Ninja Warrior and fitness program. So, any more details, call the Parks Office at 451-3300, and we'll give you all the information you need.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-194, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 1071 Outcliff Lane to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-195, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4041 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-196, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 817 Sun Creek Court to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-197, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 5691 Victory View Lane to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mr. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-198, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 318 Glen Oaks Drive to the county auditor for assessment, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes.[1602.58] Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-199, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 333 Don Lane to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-200, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4041 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-201, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 343 Robin Lane to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-202, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 273 Kinsman Court and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. DeLong?
I'm back, I'm back, and I actually had to bring a cheat sheet, even though I've sat through this, I don't know how many times already this year, unfortunately. Staff did receive a complaint on this address at 273 Kinsman Court on excessive vegetation. We did, or issue informal orders on it with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning, and it is still in the same condition as you see on the pictures. We do request that you declare the property a nuisance so we can address it with our violations, address the violations with our nuisance abatement.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.[1520.04]